I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 16, 2014 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
The current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Mr. Hoynes, administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Beginning my report this evening, you're all aware that over the next few months, we have all three of our collective bargaining unit contracts come up. We did have an initial exchange of offer with the PCA, and I would say that it was a very productive initial meeting, very reasonable on both sides, and feel pretty good about the direction of that particular contract. The other two initial exchanges come up here in the next, by the first of the year, but I'll keep you informed as we progress on those. Specific to a couple of budget items, obviously, you passed the budget for next fiscal year at your last council meeting. Here, over the next few weeks, I'll be meeting with staff and going over and prioritizing the projects that you approved for the upcoming year. If there's something in that budget that you would like to see as an elected official a prioritized higher than something else, or something you would like to get done, please give me a call, because this is the time where I start really working with each department had to prioritize and manage those projects out. And of course, some are going to be first and some are going to be last, so it's important. If you have something that you would like to see done first, if you let me know now, I can work with each, that particular department to make sure that it gets prioritized according to your specific wishes. Again, also budget-related, a couple of weeks ago, maybe, a month ago, I talked about the sales tax revenues and our projections actually exceeding what we thought they would be. Just this afternoon, Nancy provided the September report, which I think actually reflects August, maybe, collections, but I am very, very confident saying we're going to not only meet but exceed those sales tax projections. We're currently, as of this afternoon, up 5.23% over last year's previous collections and considering the Gritten Outlet Mall and other things came in. I think that shows a significant amount of growth, and that's really kind of a superficial analysis of it. I think the real policy-level thing that's important here is that not only you as elected officials understand the soundness of some of your fiscal policies over the year, but the property tax rate today, or the one that you just passed here a couple of weeks ago, is almost identical to the property tax 15-year rate 15 years ago in the city of Papillion. I think that no one can argue that we've not had substantial growth in 15 years in the city of Papillion, but really, that new growth as a philosophical position that you've taken as elected officials is now really playing out in the numbers. The new growth is paying for itself through sales tax revenues and other generations we've done. We've been able to be very, very consistent and maintain that property tax levy, and so as we wind down the year, I think it's important to let you know as an elected official that your policies are pretty sound and they're working and that new growth is paying for itself. Final thing, Mr. Mayor, Fire Department open house, I think you may have had one of them. There's actually two Fire Department open houses, okay, if you do have them both. Chief Bose is working with the city of La Vista to emulate what they traditionally had done. I think it's October 5 from 1 to 3, and it's, I think, a popcorn and a soda, same type of, you know, some educational materials and stuff the Fire Department will have up there in La Vista. The following week is a more traditional Fire Department open house, pancake feed, sausage feed, October 12, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and so if your calendars are open that day, I'm sure you appreciate it. So it's a good chance to see a lot of community members come out. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I had a question about, the first comment you had about the prioritizing of the budget projects. How do you intend to communicate that to us, inform us of what your priorities are?
Well, generally, if it needs a bid, you get communicated through the bid, but we just, we work through it on an as-needed basis, safety issues are a concern. So it's really just, it's the staff prioritization, and that's why I reach out to you as elected officials and say that if you see something that you put in that budget and you want done sooner than later, if you let me know, that certainly can be accommodated in the process, so.
Okay, but in the regular course, we wouldn't learn about the order in which the projects are coming until they show up here to go out for bids, right?
Correct.
Do you compile a list or something at the beginning of the budget year that you then work off to bring those things to us?
There's no requirement, council, to bring them to you. They're in the approved budget. We certainly can change that process if that's your preference, but we've managed most of that internally over the years based on the staff analysis.
I guess I'm just looking at that if council members want to weigh in and promote projects over other projects, I would prefer some sort of level of communication to let us know that that debate's going on, that that discussion's going on, because obviously, one person's project might go at the deficit, to the disadvantage of another person's project. So if we're all, if someone, one of the council members are sitting here believing that their project's coming along, going to be done, and all of a sudden, somebody else's project is getting done ahead of it because they spoke up and asked for a priority and we were never told, well, that'll be a lack of communication that could lead to some hurt feelings or something, so.
That makes perfect sense, and I'd be glad, as we prioritize them, to provide that information to the entire city council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Motion.
Seconded by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. In the consent agenda, we're a couple of appointments. People don't realize how many people are involved in different boards and commissions. I think at one point, I counted almost 40 people that are appointed, if you look at all the boards and commissions, and we did do two of those tonight. I don't think Mr. Barker is here. He got reappointed to the Planning Commission, does a great job. He serves for the ETJ, so I want to thank him for serving. And Nicole Raphael is on the Arts Council now, and you've been very involved with a lot of what's been going on downtown from an arts perspective, so thanks that you're going to be influencing that as well. Next on the agenda, item F1, Resolution R14-0149, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow automotive rental and sales as a permitted use on the property legally described as lots 1 and 2, Sarpy Commercial Park, generally located at 1210 Royal Drive. The applicant is Jeffrey Jordahl. This is a public hearing. I'll call for proponents. Is Jeffrey here? Thank you. Do we have any proponents? We will show that the applicant's here. Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0149? Motion by Councilman Glover.
Motion.
Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarth.
Mr. Jordahl, could you come forward, please? I have a couple of questions. Okay, so you're taking over, what was at one point, an A&amp;W, and has been a rental spot for two or three different owners, and now basically, it's just a storage lot, it appears to be. What are you going to do to that building, that premises, to make that look better?
Well, I've cleared a lot of the stuff out of there, and all the rental equipment is gone. I can't promise to do this immediately, but I do plan to replace the tin part of that building with a better-looking structure, but same size.
That's the north end?
What?
That's the north end of the building?
Correct.
What are you going to use that for right now? It's been used basically as a repair garage, I think. What are you going to use it for?
For now until, I just don't want to tear into it right before winter, but we can clean out cars and detail them and things like that.
Well, okay, now, that's right on the entrance to, a major entrance to Papillion, so obviously, there's some people in the area that have concerns about the image, what this is going to be. Let's see, do you operate a towing business also?
I do not.
Okay.
In the past, I operated an electronics company. I took care of mostly new construction for security systems and cameras, and I also did commercial electronics for like PayPal and like Dan.
Well, is any kind of a towing business going to be operated on these premises?
No, sir. What we're planning and doing is like between $10,000 and $25,000 cars. We're not looking to be about here, pay your place. We're not going to be a service thing. I can't say we'll never service our own cars, maybe eventually, but for the time being, we'll be using the neighboring businesses.
Okay, you stay there for a second. I'll ask our planning director. He has to comply with the regulations that we have. Would those regulations allow him to transform into an auto body repair or service business? Or is it just car sales? It's easy to start with car sales and then decide, well, some of those cars need repairs, and next thing you know, you've got a car repair shop there, and all sorts of things are being done differently than we thought they were going to be done.
I believe it's zoned, but I could do that without this special permit, but that's not my intention. I just want to sell cars.
Okay, so with Mr. Sturzma, would the granting of a special use permit then actually cut back on what he could do and restrict so he couldn't do those things?
The property is currently zoned industrial, and so auto sales in that district requires a special use permit. The thought being that it's more of a retail-type use and may not fit in as well with other industrial uses in the area, so the code requires an extra level of process for approval which is a special use permit process. Other uses, such as auto body and things like that, would be permitted by right, and so the special use permit, we can allow this use and we can put restrictions on this use, but I don't believe it gives us the right to restrict the use of the property that's already permitted by right.
Okay, so even though he got us, even if he gets a special use permit for this special use, he still has the right someplace down the road to use the property the way it is zoned, right? Light industrial?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'll tell you that I, this is probably not your concern, but I find that zoning a bit odd in that, basically outdated, in that everything else up there is some sort of a retail or service-type thing. It is not light industrial along that stretch. And why we would ever want light industrial along 84 Street, Washington, our main entrance there, I don't know, so, but you're not asking to rezone it, so that's not your problem. That's not our problem today, as I understand it. If we, if we grant a special use permit only for a car lot, sale, car sales, then that would restrict him to car sales. But then he could get out of the car sales business and go into something else that's properly zoned there, right?
As the owner of the property, the property has, as I said, light industrial zoning today. Any use that's permitted by right, he could convert it, he could start that today without asking our permission. He could convert in the future to those uses, but what the application is for is for auto sales, and that use does require a special use permit in the LI district. I would tend to agree with you that that area has become more of a commercial area than an industrial area, and one of the reasons we recommended approval was that we felt that the car sales was probably more in line with what's happening out there today.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to tend to agree with that last statement. I was looking for a way to get a real benefit. I mean, we do get a benefit from having this car sales rather than a light, a typical light industrial use. I think that that is a benefit. I was trying to ratchet that up to make sure that it never slides back, but it doesn't sound like we can, we can do that.
I may defer to our city attorney for some of these questions, but yeah, the special use permit process would let us put restrictions on it specific to the car sales use. You know, that's what, that's what the special use permit process is for, is let you evaluate it, make sure that you are compatible with your neighbors, those sorts of things. It lets us address things that we think are problematic. I suppose you could put restrictions on the, on the car sales use, you know, such as how they would maintain cars or, you know, restrict auto body work in relation to the car sales, but that would not restrict them from converting the business to a, you know, something that is permitted, such as auto body.
If it would help you, we have another lot in Bellevue that anything that's an unsightly car will go to. If somebody trades-
Thank you, we approve of that. Glad you brought it up and not us.
And it doesn't make us look good either if we have beaters sitting around, so if somebody trades in something that's an ugly car, it'll go over there until we can get rid of it.
Yeah, I noticed that, you know, the synopsis says you're going to be selling cars in the range of $12,000 to $25,000 per vehicle, but I don't see any, that's not in the conditions, so I don't see if that, that's a nice place to start, but I don't see how that's enforceable down the road. Maybe there is something.
There may be some cars a little less than that, too, just because of, there's high school kids and things around, and they can't afford all those, but we're, our goal is to have a classy operation that fits the neighborhood.
That's my goal, too.
I have a partner who has a lot in South Omaha for that type of car, and that's where that type of car belongs, and that's where, if we got something like that, that's where it would go. I don't know, I mean.
Well, you're, I mean, you're coming forward with something that I don't consider to be the ideal use of that property, but nonetheless, seems to be a better use than what has been there for a number of years and has repeatedly failed, so.
If it was rezoned to what it is across the street, that would be fine, too, to me. It still approves auto sales, but then it would be, retail isn't even allowable where it is.
Okay, now, the Planning Commission, someone came forward and indicated that several of the businesses in the area weren't particularly happy with the car sales. Have you talked to them since then?
Yes, and it was a misunderstanding and a rumor that thought we were rezoning it to heavy industrial, and we're going to have heavy industrial and agricultural equipment there, which actually, even on light industrial, we could have, and we wouldn't have needed a special permit for that, but that's not what we want to do. We want to do car sales.
See, and I'm a little bit surprised that the bank didn't come forward and have some comments about being next door to car sales, but then, on the other hand, you know, they built the bank there when it was, oh, I don't go back far enough. Maybe Steve, maybe you do, was the A&amp;W still in business when they built the bank, or was it a rental place? But nonetheless, that's what it is. Maybe they hope to get a lot of loans for your, from your customers.
Our full intention is that it'll look better than it ever has in the past.
Well, I'm going to vote for it, but I guess I've expressed my concerns and the benefits and the negatives there. We'll see how the future goes. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep it up. I understand you are in a, in light industrial area, and just behind you to the east and north is some real light industrial, but nonetheless, as has been pointed out, it's evolved over the years into more of a retail of some sort. It's right next to our high school and right at the northern entrance to the city, so at least from my standpoint, I drive by it every day, and I'll certainly pay attention to how you're doing, and I wish you the best of luck.
It is our intention to keep improving it.
Mr. Glover.
Jeff, I got a quick question. Can you explain the rental piece of that?
The rental piece of the application?
Yeah.
I think that's just stock language for auto sales. I don't really intend to rent cars. I was actually just applying for auto sales, but I think that's part of the stock language for that application and the special permit.
Because I know the current owner had a, you know, rental or, one of the rental companies where you rented out trucks and-
Oh, yeah, they approached me. I've already turned them down.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, item F2, Ordinance 1685, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as a replat of lots 1 through 85 and outlots A through G, Stockman's Hollow Replat 4, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of 68 Street and Peters Parkway, from R3 with a specific planned unit development district overlay, urban family residential, PUD 2, to R4 multifamily residential, to dissolve the PUD 2 district overlay to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve 1685? Mr. Folenkamp is here if we have questions.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Mr., by Councilman Ingberg.
Seconded.
By Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F3, Resolution R14-0150, a resolution to approve the final plat for the property legally described as a replat of lots 1 through 85 and outlots A through G, Stockman's Hollow Replat 4, generally located at 68 Street and Peters Parkway, applicant is Celebrity Homes. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0150?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Seconded.
By Councilman Florence. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. John, just a question, and my fingers weren't fast enough on the other one, but I noticed that you're changing the lot numbers from 1 to 85 to 1 to 62, and you're also reducing the outlots. Is that what's happening also?
That's correct. It's actually, the project was originally a villa development, and it was a Hearthstone Home development, and as you know, they filed for bankruptcy. The property was auctioned off, and Celebrity came in and was continuing to build out the neighborhood, and so this will be fewer lots, but more high-value residences on each lot. The lots are bigger, so the PUD part of it, which was the justification for the modification to the setbacks, will go away.
Okay, so even though it's, it's going to an R4 multifamily, it's going to have less dense-
It's actually less dense, more value, bigger houses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F4, Resolution R14-0151, a resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Stockman's Hollow subdivision agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0151?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug.
Seconded.
By Councilman Stube. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F5, Resolution R14-0155, a resolution to approve revisions to the general order policy for development guidelines. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0155? Motion by Councilman Glover.
Seconded.
By Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand what this will or won't do. As I understand it, this will allow somebody who's next door to an unplatted lot to expand or use that unplatted lot and plat it and not pay the capital facilities charge if they're not adding a direct connection to the water syst, water and sewer system, right?
They will be connecting to it. They'll, they already have a connection.
They won't have a new water or sanitization.
Correct. They won't be expanding the use.
Okay, so if that's the case, then there will, would not be any additional growth expenses to the system, because the system's already in place there to serve that lot, correct? But somebody who comes along and wants to add a new connection to the system will still have to pay the same capital facility charge as if they're out in an undeveloped area and putting in a new house on a new lot, right?
I'm going to defer to the city engineer on that, but I am not sure that, or the planning director.
Just to back up a little bit, so we, this would apply to unplatted lots throughout, you know, the history of Papillion. On a few occasions, there have been improvements made to unplatted lots, typically called tax lots. A building was permitted, permit issued by the city. There was a connection to water and sewer. Everything was fine. In some cases, decades passed, and then there was a desire to make an improvement to that building, for example, expand the footprint. Current code requires that that lot be platted. Plating that lot is the trigger for collecting the capital facility fees and sewer connection fees, and those are substantial fees. They're related to new development, and that's what helps us fund the expansion of our utilities. But it certainly catches those property owners off guard who have been using their property for some time and want to do something that we would certainly support, which is improve the property, but now we're saying, well, to do that, you need to plat, and though, by the way, now you have this, this significant fee that you need to pay, even though they're already connected to the system. So the reasoning behind this waiver is that in those instances where there's already an improvement to the property, meaning a structure has been built, and the owner needs to or wants to plat the property, most likely for an improvement project, more or less, we've already waived those fees. This, this gives us clear policy, and that instance, we're not going to collect those fees. It would not apply if they're going to, if they have a tax lot or an unplatted lot that is not improved, and they're going to put, let's say, a building on there and connect to the system, then they need to plat it and they need to pay those fees. Also, if they're going to tear down an existing building and put up a new building, creating a new connection to the system, or expand an existing building to the point where they need a new connection to our, our utilities, then we're going to collect those fees according to this policy. But it, just in cases where we've, in the past, issued a building permit, let them connect to the system, but then after the fact, asked them to plat and then collect those fees, this, this would waive it in that instance.
Yeah, so you, you said two things that I think, to my mind, encapsulate why this might be a good idea, in that in the past, currently, plating of the lot is the trigger that requires payment of the capital facilities charge, but plating in and of itself has really no connection to the purpose of the capital facilities charge. It's just an administrative thing where you draw lines on a, on a map. It doesn't mean that anybody is going to, is imposing additional expense onto the system. And so, yes, in most cases, it's a very handy trigger, but it's an inaccurate trigger. And so, when you talk about, well, when there's a new connection, then they'll have to pay the fee, and to my mind, well, that's a better trigger than the plating, because it's a direct connection, it's a direct relationship with the expense of running a sewer and water system. And if I understand it right, that's all this does, is it recognizes the inaccuracy of that plating trigger and looks at something that's more accurate, correct?
Well, the reason you collect those fees at plating is then it's a developer responsibility versus a building permit. Whoever pulls the building permit responsibility, and I think that was done for a purpose, but in terms of when the connection is made, yeah, it's made with the building permit, not with the plating.
Yeah, I said, I, I don't have any problem with collecting it from the developer when plating, because it works, very efficient, works well, and in, you know, like 99.9% of the times, it's going to be an accurate trigger. And in the situation, for example, where the school district faces itself, I look at that and I think, well, that's not an accurate trigger. That's just a, that's a fallacy. So I'm in favor of this, of this, I'm generally not in favor of creating exemptions to collecting the fees, and in particular, when you're collecting them from another political entity, such as a school district, but this seems to recognize a reality that our current system doesn't, and so I'm going to vote for it.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. I don't think any committees have met since the last council meeting. Do we have any comments from the floor? Any comments from council- Any comments from council?
Some updates, Mr. Hoynes and I did attend a United Cities meeting, most of it's looking at legislative agenda, getting ready for the upcoming session. Just kind of a note, the two primary points of discussion, one was around the city's ability to see information related to sales and use tax. We've talked a lot about that in the past of how we, right now, we really don't have a right to see that information based on legislative action. We've made some minor changes to that, but it still needs to be fixed, and so we're gonna be working on that. We also talked a little bit about Nebraska Advantage. Mr. Hoynes mentioned that as well. That is the reach back where the state can come in and take our local option, sales tax dollars. La Vista got hit by that by a tune of a couple of million dollars recently and went a number of months without sales tax. Mr. Hoynes mentioned that our sales tax is up five percent over projections. The important thing to realize, though, is because of the Nebraska Advantage, we don't know what our outstanding liability is related to that reach back. There could be companies that applied for Nebraska Advantage up to seven or eight years ago that have completed their projects, and they have about seven years to claim, so we don't know. In effect, we have an off-balance-sheet liability, and we have no idea what that liability is. So while our sales tax is up, we are reserving some of those dollars so we can start almost self-insuring against that potential of the state reaching back and taking those dollars. So that's a lot of what our legislative agenda is, to try to get more insight into that, but if you have questions about how we're managing that liability and what we're doing with the state, let us know. And if you have other things you want on the legislative agenda for United Cities, let us know as well. Also participated in the Sarpy Leadership Bus Tour. New classes kicked off, and they do a tour of the whole county, and every city gives an update. Mr. Hoynes and Mr. Sturzma and I met with Emmanuel Trinity Village. They're doing some master planning in regards to some expansion, and of course, we're talking about community center in our areas abut each other, so as we're both master planning, we're trying to keep some active conversation so we don't create a conflict there, and I think they're gonna be a good partner on a number of things, potentially. Took a tour of the new Fairfield Inn. If you haven't done that, reach out to them, it's a nice facility. Also, Mr. Hoynes and I participated in a roundtable discussion that Mr. Gowen facilitated with the Leadership Academy, and we talked with the Leadership Academy about the fire department merger, what was going on in La Vista's mind, what were they analyzing, how did they make decisions, what was going on in Papillion's side, and how did we come together. So that was a good discussion. Also participated in, gave an update to the Sarpy County Young Professionals on the growth going on in the area, and have started the tours of second-grade students. It's when they start talking about government and civics, so going around to the elementary schools and giving an update. Couple of reminders, the, this Thursday, the downtown businesses are having their third sipping walk, wine sipping walk, starting at the Twisted Vine and going into about ten different businesses. I think Mr. Florence went to one of those. It's a great event, a great way to see the businesses down there and what's going on downtown. That's this Thursday from six to eight. It's not too late to register. The League of Nebraska Municipalities is having their annual conference next week, the 24th through the 26th in North Platte, so if you want to register for that, reach out to the administration. Sam's Club, I think, is gonna have a ribbon cutting on September 25th. Habitat for Humanity for Sarpy County is having an annual meeting on October 10th, and then Mr. Hoynes already mentioned, the Fire Department, along with PVFD Inc., is having the traditional pancake feed on October 12th. I believe that's most of the updates. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Councilman Florence. Second by Councilwoman Klug. Please vote. Mr. Ingberg, Mr. Mumgaard.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned, thank you.